Okay. I'll call an immediate order for the East Adam Planning and Zoning Commission for March twenty fifth two thousand and twenty five. Could I have attendance, please?
Give me a second. Harry Brownell.
Here.
James Curtin.
Here.
Richard Pettenelli.
Here.
Bernard Gillis.
Here.
Ed Gubbins.
Here.
Deborah Langen.
Here.
Tony Demme.
Yeah.
Stephen LeMire. Absent Susan Gensler.
Do you guys need to?
No, they don't have a quorum, so.
They don't have a quorum. Okay. Let's just get to do a couple of things and then we'll move on to Mudus Center.
Did we identify these people?
I'm sorry?
Sure.
Mike Robidoux, EDC Vice Chair.
Dave Mer, EDC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, minutes of our past meeting, which was February eleventh. Anyone have anything?
I just, uh, did we vote on, um, sending a letter to, uh, citing council?
No.
Well, because the majority of the opinions when we went around the board. Not just against.
So seven minutes as they are. Any bills?
No bills.
Okay, Mudus master plan. You guys. You're up.
Okay, well, needless to say, I'm a little frazzled from trying to get this all set up.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I just need to take a deep breath. Okay, well, um, pleasure to be and see everybody again. Um, for the record, um, my name is Robert Collins. As you might recall, and I'm a professional planner and project manager with SLR. And, uh, myself, as well as, uh, my team of professionals have been, uh, you know, working with you over the last six months to developing a master plan for the Mudus Center. Um, just to kind of bring you up to speed, since it's been a couple of months since we last talked. You might recall that in the fall, we conducted, um, a survey. We had a open house. Uh, we gathered information from, uh, from not only you all, but also from the public through those, those various channels. Uh, we then, uh, completed our site assessment, uh, that map that's in front of the room right now, which is I know hard three twenty BDC individually, but that's the site assessment map that we prepared and that's also posted on the project website. And, uh, based on that, uh, we then, in the later part of the fall and early winter, we developed a vision statement that had some theme areas uh, that we shared, uh, uh, through email, uh, correspondence with each one of you. Um, we didn't really see, I think we had two options and we didn't really receive too much additional feedback, um, but it was recommended that from the few that did respond that we went with, uh, the one, one of those. I'm gonna re-review that with you. I'm also gonna hand out something to you all tonight for you to look at, cause I'm assuming that after I give you a preview of like our, our draft recommendations, that the ending, uh, of tonight's meeting will really be about discussion. Giving you some time to take a look at those recommendations, take a look at the, uh, the target area, uh, plan map. And then discuss like what our, our next steps will be to kind of wrap up the study and get it finalized. So my, my main goal tonight will be to very quickly review the vision statement and those theme areas. I'll give you an overview of the recommendations and then kind of focus on, um, specifically going into the specific target area recommendations. Are there any like initial questions before we go further?
We put that map up on the screen or?
I don't have this map, but I do have the other stuff and I'll be putting them up. Totally because this is an old one that we've seen before, but there's certainly back here, um, afterwards you wanna look at. Okay, so this is the vision statement that we came up with in the fall, that everybody took a look at. Um, I'm not necessarily gonna read it, but cause again, and, uh, I might give you a second to like re-read it and maybe refresh yourself. Uh, but basically it was, the first paragraph kind of talks about like, um, you know, what is Mudus Center? Where did it come from? What is it today? And then the second paragraph really kind of describes like the direction that is desired to take Mudus Center in. So I'll give everybody a few minutes to take a look at that and refresh your memory. Okay. Everybody recalling that or have any questions? And, you know, as we progress through to the final document, if there's like slight word adjustments or something like that, that they, uh, the full, uh, group, uh, both groups desire, we can always make those, you know, we're not like locked into it because, but we're hoping that it will stay pretty much intact. From the vision statement, you know, the vision statement, as we described during the time of the, uh, vision statement is that what we saw from our analysis and from what we heard from the communities, as well as talking with the various property owners, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission and the members of the Economic Development Commission was that within embedded within that theme area, there's really, um, I'm sorry, the vision statement, there's really, um, three overarching themes. And the first one is really to establish a village center character, physical and, you know, physical character is what we mean by character, as well as economic development, um, opportunities and renewal. Things like that, those were falling into that char- category. And that includes everything from place making, the building style and architecture, land use, zoning, mixed use and housing. And then economic development, business renewal and special events. And then also coupled in that is the utility infrastructures, because that, as everybody knows right now, is probably one of the greatest limiting factors to the center as it exists today. The second overarching theme really involves, uh, streetscape character. And this is, uh, within the, the village, um, uh, center. You know, establishing a better defined and safer pedestrian experience. Connecting, uh, various important points within the greater Mudus, uh, uh, center. You know, such as where we are tonight, the municipal complex. Library, firehouse, some of the various businesses and the commercial core, as well as some of the residential areas and the elementary school. Obviously, traffic and vehicular experience is very important. We know that this is something that Mudus Center has been dealing with since day one, ever since, and also even more so ever since, um, Connecticut DOT conveniently made some adjustments in the six- the sixties, which, you know, radically changed the character of Mudus Center. And we know that we wanna link, um, the Route one forty nine study, uh, safety audit or study that was done a couple of years ago. We don't wanna, you know, necessarily recreate the wheel on that, so we did try to make sure that those recommendations within that were kind of incorporated and then we kind of expanded on them a little bit. Um, and that ties into then the road infrastructure, the places where maybe the road could be narrowed. Um, uh, but still maintaining, uh, safety, but allow for pedestrian movements, crosswalks, gateways, things like that. And then lastly, the overarching theme from the vision statement is really connecting with the natural environment of the area, which is a very crucial component. Um, existing park space, concert, land conservation, recreation opportunities. And just the natural space, including like the river, for instance, uh, which, you know, right now, if you are a long-term resident of Mudus Center or even East Adam, if you were flying down your car on Route one forty nine, you probably wouldn't even realize that that river is just on the others to the north of you. In a couple of spots, it's, it's just, you know, feet away from you almost and you would never know that. So I think, you know, and then there's the Village Green, but I think there's an opportunity, uh, you know, to expand on some of those park spaces, connect the, um, the Mazda Day property and house more to the Village Green and then to a park space and then down into the river. And then connecting with the, uh, ex- extensive trail system that the town and the area already has being developed in some of the neighboring properties and making sure that there's a connection to that. And then making sure that the natural environment that we're connecting with is, continues to be sustainable into the future. You know, that we're not disrupting it, uh, too substantially. We wanna make sure that it's preserved, uh, in a way that will be, um, make it enticing for people to visit, but also will be sustainable for the long-term future by not destroying it. And then also, you know, leaving in resiliency as well to make sure that hazard mitigations and things related to changing frequency of storms and intensities like river flooding and stuff like that is also being taken into consideration. Um, and then also because we're in a New England climate, we do have seasonal variety between the differences between like winter, spring, summer and fall, those types of things. So from the vision statement and the overarching recommend- recommendations, uh, I'm sorry, overarching themes. We have, uh, laid out a series of recommendations and the first of all, we have, uh, recommendations that fall into Mudus Center-wide recommendations and these are really for the, that are overarching for the whole entire, uh, uh, Village Center. And they are, first of all, laying out and defining that Village Center physical character. You know, at the open house that we had in the fall, we asked people what type of different village characters do people prefer? You know, do they prefer, um, something around a town square or is it more related to having the buildings close to the street? Having like that urban, um, village cha- you know, uh, quality New England village character? Uh, is it something different than that? Um, we generally found, and not surprising, that kind of creating that unique, uh, but somewhat easily identifiable New England town center type of quality was something that I think was uniformly desired. That would lead to then, we know that the Mudus, um, Center District zoning regulations were recently updated, you know, through Jim and through this group. Um, I think it was in two thousand and twenty one, is that right, or twenty two?
Sounds right.
So, I mean, it's hard to believe that was already like four. Four years ago and so we did take a look at that. And what we have also recommended in our recommendations is another kind of further evolution of those zoning regulations. To kind of, to, to try to define the actual sub-districts within the village a little bit more clearly. Add to the uses, kind of, uh, um, adjust some of the dev- um, site development standards to kind of fit a little bit more closely with that desired character. Um, and that, and then that's eas- that's right away, it connected to the land use, because the land use, we took a look at the missing allowable uses within the zoning categories and in order to create, um, some of the types of businesses and economy that was desired, um, from the public engagement, you know, we suggest adding some uses and things like that. Um, and then also housing, um, some potential for either mixed housing or like middle housing opportunities. The opportunities are limited, but we know that the town is desiring to make sure that, um, as appropriate and as able that some housing get woven into the Village, um, Center. The other one, the next one, that's kind of overarching for the entire center, uh, is really economic development, um, and business renewal. I don't think that's a surprise, you know, because that really is focused on the commercial core, but we do know that there is some additional businesses and economic, uh, activity that's happening outside the core, for instance, like the Brownell property. Um, some of the uses further down. Then utility infrastructure, which is something that's gonna have to be continuing to be discussed and determined. Uh, but we do kind of lay out and have a recommendation, although it's not specific, but it's something that can maybe be pointed to for funding activities or for further study and investigation. And then lastly, those sustainable and resilient kind of capturing things that are already within the town codes, um, state codes and things like that, and just making sure that those ideals get woven into, uh, redevelopment opportunities in future, uh, work within, uh, Mudus Center. Then, uh, the other recommendations, and I have two slides on this, these are ones that are more specific and I, after I run through these, I will hand out a document to you and I will go to the map and we'll kind of talk about, or I'll put the map up on the screen and we will talk about them in more detail. But right now, I'm just kind of giving you a quick broad overview. And then we can certainly have opportunity for time. But for, um, you know, what we found when we were analyzing it, in addition to needing to have some village-wide recommendations, we really found that there were really some specific targeted areas that needed to have some specific recommendations. And, and in this particular case, these are the type of recommendations where we would have actual, uh, proposed capital commitment projects, opportunities for the property owners, uh, to, you know, to consider redeveloping properties and how. Um, and then, um, uh, well, I think that's pretty much it. It's just more specific. And I know that, that in the first targeted area, those are actually the Mudus Center redevelopment opportunities. And these, uh, four sites are really are the properties that are right there in the very center where William M. Palmer Road comes together with Falls Road. There's obviously properties on four corners, a couple of them are individual properties and some of them would potentially be, uh, you know, maybe a combination of properties. We have recommendations, we could talk about them in a little bit more detail, and I think in our final plan, as long as these would continue to be recommended redevelopment opportunity sites, we would, in the final plan, we would have character sketches of those, each one of those properties. Uh, so that they could potentially be used, uh, by the property owners or others, or the town, or the Planning and Zoning Commission or Economic Development Commission to maybe entice, um, uh, you know, redevelopment or, or as you're saying, this is a possible idea. I mean, it would be, those character sketches would definitely take into consideration the limitations, uh, what we would be proposing at the zoning, but also the limitations that would exist by the current situations with infrastructure capabilities, like sewer and water. Gateways then is the next particular area. We think that establishing a series of gateways, um, uh, along Route, uh, one forty nine as well, uh, and, and then some of the other adjacent roads. Uh, with some simple features, but just some like, uh, branding and like pavement material changes and things like that. We'll just kind of announce, uh, to either pedestrian or, you know, person traveling by vehicle through the area, that they've kind of arrived to the Village, uh, I'm sorry, the Budis Center or the Village Commercial Core. And that is something, uh, I think, and we'll talk about that, I think the shows, it is more announcing more than the commercial core. Um, at least all the ones on Route one forty nine, but some of the north-south, uh, which are more kind of welcoming you into the the Village, um, Center, um, as a whole. The other targeted, the third targeted area is really focused on a kind of establishing that Mudus River Park that I talked about, like across, uh, the street from the Village Green. Um, to kind of experience, you know, to lay the groundwork to kind of connect people through making them aware and having that, that park that's focused on the river, maybe with some history or interpretive signage, uh, with some other improvements. And then that would be where the Mudus River Trail would, would connect and would go down to the river, connect to the Stone Bridge, as well as weave its way through the other, uh, town-owned property and conservation land until it meets up with the, um, the tra- the existing trails that are, um, kind of, um, on the north side of this center. Um, and then also we wanted to make sure, because in talking with the town, we did, you know, get the plans related to the recreation field expansion and, um, possibility for a trail on the, you know, the land that's behind, uh, the municipal complex here or the parking lot. Since that's, um, you know, kind of, uh, plans are going through some review and I think funding for those in some times in the near future, we wanted to make sure that we were able to do that, so that that was awareness, um, but then also, uh, suggesting a trail connection, um, to tie into Roots, uh, one forty nine and, uh, one fifty one, um, so that it could then connect to the Mazda Day House, as well as those park trails.
The gateway, um, you have pictures of some examples of stuff that you've seen, that like, that you think would fit the area?
I, I mean, we, that's what we're planning on having. I mean, I don't have those tonight, but what, what I, you know, what we would be recommending, like, once you have a chance to take a look at the overall, like the recommendations, if, you know, we make some slight adjustments based on the initial feedback that we get from you, that would be our next task. And in the final document, we would have individual maps that would be just about each one of the target areas. And then with those maps, there would be examples of like, um, uh, photographs of like real-life examples and then also materials. Um, for the redevelopment opportunity sites, that we would actually do sketched, like, uh, you know, we would take a photograph and then we would sketch up, wanted to kind of give an image of what that would look like. Um, but most likely the gateways would, would mainly be probably a change in pavement materials that might be intersections when we're at that location. But there might also be, um, some, uh, branding with like maybe some banners or flags or landscaping. Maybe some seating areas as might be appropriate adjacent to the sidewalks, things like that. It would also be different in each one of the gateways, because there are three primary gateways and then there's three secondary ones. The secondary ones would be more low-key, probably just with signage and landscaping. Um, the fourth targeted area is streetscape and this would be, um, again, tie into some of the recommendations that came out of the, uh, one forty nine, the one forty nine safety audit. You know, they had already kind of outlined where there would be some, um, you know, road narrowing and things like that for safety. So we wanted to, you know, to tie into that, but we have some additional recommendations. But also the streetscape, uh, would also, the recommendations would also include, include things like street trees where appropriate. Again, this banners and signage and branding of the, of the commercial, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, of the center core area. And then lastly, um, the housing, um, uh, potential targeted area. Um, which has been identified in our conversations as, uh, you know, being some vacant property that's currently um, not being utilized, but it could, it has greater potential for some, uh, on-site sewage disposal systems. And so it probably offers the greatest opportunity for maybe some consolidated middle housing type of opportunities if, if the town so desires to seek them. Uh, but then throughout with the zoning regulation updates, infill, uh, housing, um, you know, in the type of middle type of housing like duplexes, triplexes would also be encouraged, but because those would be on individual sites, it's not really a full-fledged target. Okay, so that's my run-through of the, of the recommendations, um, and I can go through them in a little bit more detail and, and hand out, um, information to you. Um, are there any, um, are there additional, like initial questions or observations or thoughts or anything like that, or are you just?
I just wanted to get a little more definition on what the term gateway, the way we all may think of it, it may be different than how you're using it, because we're moving by that in the reference to how you're using it in this concept.
Well, as I mentioned, a gateway would really be, um, primarily handled through signage and some subtle branding, like maybe with some banners, um, or light poles or things like that and through landscaping. You know, there might be, um, you know, within the right-of-way or just outside the right-of-way, there might be, um, uh, some kind of specialized landscaping that would kind of, you know, tie into the signage to kind of announce that you're coming into the Mudus Center.
To distinguish these different areas, you try to?
Right. There could also be, and as, you know, you'll see in the more detailed recommendations, there could potentially be at that point, there could be a change in pavement at that, at that gateway. You know, maybe it's, um, just stamped asphalt, you know, and then maybe painted like, like wood, just so that it gives a sense that you're going into some kind of different location, also would potentially like slow the traffic down.
When I think of a gateway, I think of a beveled stone wall on, on each corner, you know, as you enter, you know, in a new street.
Mm-hmm.
Just in a general sense, it's an, like an entranceway into this, this new environment, yeah.
Right. Right, and I think, you know, while we're laying the groundwork and saying this is the location for a gateway, we're being careful not to like completely lock it in and say this is exactly what it looks like, because we think that that's what, you know, as the town starts to implement various projects to, uh, to implement the, um, ma- uh, the master plan for Mudus Center. You know, you would have to go out and get, you know, detailed engineering and landscape, uh, plans done for that gateway. But at that time, if there are unique features, um, that the town has with like stone wall or stone column or something like that. Um, of course, those types of things would probably have to be outside of right-of-way, but you might be able to get easements on the adjacent properties. But having that consistent and having that, you know, that standard sign along with those type of maybe, um, uh, bollards or stone, uh, columns would be highly encouraged.
Yeah, a question, Bob, I noticed, or I didn't notice, that Grissmill Road was listed as one of the roads that you're considered part of the village area or not, because I didn't see it listed, is it listed?
Well, it's, it's, it's not considered, um, I mean, it's within the Village Center, definitely, but.
It's in that, I, I just didn't look at the map that closely, but is it in that map area there, Grissmill?
Um, it is, it just said it's not identified as something that would happen.
I didn't see it, you didn't mention it. I was just wondering if nothing was being, you know, proposed for that area, cause that does connect to the park down at the bottom of the hill.
Yes.
There's a park there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Collet Farm, it's a land trust. It's a number of, uh, parcels that run along the Mudus River.
Yeah. Grissmill is right here and it goes up to, to, um, right here and then, you know, this is the park area that you're talking about, the guy, it's the Hidden Valley, um, farm preserve property, and there's a parking area right there.
There's a parking area, yeah.
So this is definitely part of the study, which is that we're not recommending, uh, because it's kind of a smaller and secondary road, it, we're not proposing a gateway being on that particular road. Uh, we're actually proposing the ga- and also because this curves around back to North Mudus, we're actually proposing the North Gateway to be on North Mudus at this location and then kind of right near the cemetery and then tie in with like just sidewalk on one side to kind of get down to that point. Um, obviously, there would be some treatment at Grissmill as it meets a one forty nine, as far as like with having some crosswalks. Um, uh, and things like that, but there would not be any other like major, uh, at least we're not currently proposing, but that's why, why we're reviewing them with you, because if you feel that would, that warrants something, it could certainly be added to the, to the.
I was just asking, I just didn't notice it being listed and so with all the other roads there and so.
Well, the roads that are listed, there are only roads that are proposed to have some major streetscape improvements. The other roads, there's, and there's actually plenty of other roads that aren't mentioned as well. So there just wouldn't be, at least in this initial study, because we're trying, you know, we could have made recommendations like every- on every single road, but what we're trying to do is make sure that we're at this time, because there's limited resources and funding and we're also talking about like ten years. We're trying to focus like where the greatest impacts can be made. And so we've tried to identify those in this particular study that especially by concentrating in this area the most is where the, you know, you'll get the most, uh, impact, uh, over the next decade or so.
You don't want a grand, a grand entrance to a road to nowhere.
True.
Yeah.
Um, and that could, you know, it could evolve too. I mean, like if, if the, uh, redevelopment of some of these parcels starts to happen and some things start to change.
Jim wants all the traffic going down, it was, done on my dead-end road. No place to turn around, your, your front yard.
I know you've had a question.
About housing, um, your housing recommendation, is that just reflective of the housing that's in the district now? Or where we should consider putting housing as part of this plan?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I said, so, um, within the zoning recommendations with, and, and I can explain that in a, in a minute, a little bit more detail, because we're, we're proposing kind of like further evolving the Mudus Center, uh, district regu- uh, zoning regulations. And that would act, one of the first steps would be to kind of clo- uh, divide the district in, or the, um, the, uh, center into, uh, uh, very, you, you know, unique, uh, center districts. Cause like right now, there's two new ones that were created by the previous study, but then some of the other properties within the study area are actually still like the same zoning category that's outside. Wouldn't be radically different for some like the commercial residential areas. They probably would stay very similar to the category they are. We would just give them a slightly different name and they might have slightly different recom- recommendations. But within the rest. But within the recommendations, especially with the uses, we would kind of promote by having listed them out and having them listed as potential desired. Housing, there would we there would be a big focus on middle housing, things like duplexes, triplexes, um, townhomes, um. You know, things like that that would fit within the character of what's already out there, maybe like ADUs, which we know some of these things the town is already pursuing. But it would just be another way to try to promote that and it would be more like it it for the, all the residential district, it would be more as like an infill opportunity. You know, because for obvious reasons. This area down here, which is the housing targeted area, this area offers the greatest potential for. Uh, because it's undeveloped, it undeveloped and has opportunity for, uh, one-site sewage disposal. These parcels down here, if they were, you know, planned out or or, um, further studied. Offer probably the greatest opportunity for consolidated housing, like, uh, uh, you know, not on a large scale, but I mean like not just being infill. Also would be targeted more for like middle housing and housing that the town might need, like maybe senior additional senior housing or housing for folks that. Are just starting out with like smaller homes or something like that. Um, there is also within the commercial area, there's also discussion about mixed use and that would be added to the zoning regulations. But again, um, there's because of the situation with the existing infrastructure, there's very limited opportunities for that. But there could still be a couple of additional apartments, um. Uh, or more apartments if less commercial space was utilized or something like that, which, you know, could potentially be on the second floor. If these parcels or a couple of them were redeveloped so that the buildings were oriented more towards the street, so they were being redeveloped. You would have commercial on the ground floor and then office space or, um, a few apartments on the second floor.
So you we keep mentioning utility restrictions and we're aware of that, but the housing parcel does have good soil, good plant. Did you give any consideration to a low-pressure sewage system in the area or is that a future consideration?
Well, that's why we made this a target area, because of that possibility.
We could do, I mean, the village could go there too and, you know, the sand filter or something.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that would have to be studied, that yeah, is one of the recommendations, but that's specifically why we identified that. Also by identifying that, it allows it, it allows you, the town, because you can point to it in a study. And say, this is our target area and therefore you could potentially tap into resources that you might need to. You know, have either a community system or, um, encourage developers that might purchase the property or something like that to use something along those lines. Um, that's really kind of the main point, purpose of, uh, having these target areas so that those types of things can be pointed to.
What did you find to be, uh, the most challenging, uh, component, the topography, some hilly or?
You mean for this property here or just in general?
In general, what what did you, you know, find to be dead end?
Well, it depends on the situation. I mean, I think when it came to park and recreation, I even though there was some steep topography, because we were talking about trails. And thing and not like sidewalks, like for instance, connecting the, uh, the three new athletic fields here. You know, poten- potentially with, um, a trail in this area, like we couldn't propose a sidewalk or something in this area because there's too much grade change. Um, but we thought it was a perfect opportunity to then maybe have, while there might be sidewalk and ADA accessibility, which, you know, to these fields. We felt that there could also be, um, you know, a trail that would connect up to here, but then would continue and then connect with this system here. So that way, somebody could potentially come through the trail system to get on their, you know, if they wanted to walk. Able to, then they could get to the playing fields.
In the spirit of full disclosure, uh, the plan might need a bear relocation program. Did Jim mention we have a municipal resident bear back there?
Um, I I wouldn't be surprised, um. Could use one for a work in my house too, because they're all coming out everywhere, even in the urban areas. Um, you know, that same situation was also, you know, there is a nice flat area here on this other side.
The town used to be.
Well, you know, down here further, but like right across from the town green, so there there already is kind of a clearing and that was an easy decision about like that should be where. Potentially the Mudus River Park could be or start. But then, you know, the terrain behind that park, getting down to the actual river and getting to the stone, uh, the stone bridge is very steep. But because it's a trail, you know, you would be able to, uh, have it go down those, uh, grade, those grades, uh, without it having, you know, not being a paved sidewalk.
Is it necessary to go down the grade or just run along the top?
View down.
Vision.
Well.
Visual.
Safety issues.
You know, I mean, I think there would be, we are proposing the sidewalk to run right along route like from the park, so there would be two things.
Yeah.
There would be a concrete sidewalk that would be within the right of way of one forty nine to connect the park and the green area. On, you know, because there's already a sidewalk on the south side, but we think there should be a sidewalk on the north side. Because the the north side sidewalk needs to continue all the way through to one to twenty-five, uh, Falls Road. And but then the sidewalk on the south side should continue all the way from the senior center all the way through it. In many cases, it's already here, it's just not in this section right here. But our understanding is that, you know, in the past, the town has talked to the properties on the south side. And there is some, because you know, if you go through that now, you would think, how in the world are you gonna get a sidewalk on either side of this right way in this area? But, um, but our understanding is that there is some desire on the south side, uh, with these property owners for sidewalk and. We've heard of like lots of situations of people walking in the roads and things like that to get out here, especially when to get to the other preserve, but also the senior center and some of the. Um, seasonal activities that they have out here and I think this sidewalk section here is probably one of the highest priorities. For capital preference.
I agree.
Is there going to be a pathway from the senior housing to the senior center?
You mean like through here?
Yes.
Yes, um, I mean, there's already trails in the, um. I forget the name of it, the.
It's being worked on right now, right?
Yeah, they go at, um, farms and I think the town is also working on some of that, but we made sure to include that, so there would be a connection, you know, through the. The, uh, entrance here and then tapping into the parks, but then there's a. There is a grade change, but there is an opportunity to connect the farthest trail that's on this side of the preserve property just over here to the senior center. And we are showing that on our trails map, um, as a potential linkage that would be important.
What do you think of that that park there?
You mean the the?
The one by the Brownell Company here.
Um, not not a hundred percent, I don't, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Jim, it's probably, that piece probably three and a half, four acres.
They filled in that canal that was there?
No.
They left it, I thought they were gonna fill it in.
Still swinging?
The canal, you know, they're putting that road down through, I thought they were gonna.
No, the the, that one is is still open, the only thing is that the drainage pipes go through it, so it's filled on, so it. But they allow the water to pass through, they put pipe in there, yeah.
And it still goes underneath the old mill tube?
Well, I, if you open the dam, but the dam right now is gated gated off, so yes.
I thought they had discontinued it, okay.
Brownells did in their yard.
I'm sorry?
Brownell Building?
Yeah.
They pushed it in at that point, so it didn't go under the building anymore, that's been that way for a while.
Correct.
Any other overarching questions or anything at this point, um?
You can add, you mentioned that, uh, your vision was, uh, or the vision that the town gave you was of a New England village type main street. Uh, is that conducive to this area? Is that gonna be, uh, difficult to achieve?
I mean, I don't, I don't think so, because first of all, I think every village would be as unique, um, but there are some commonalities and I think the commonalities are. What used to be in Mudus where the buildings were kind of oriented more towards the road.
Right.
You know, um. And there, in that overarching kind of character where we talk about, um, that would potentially be embedded in the zoning regulations. It really talks about with these redevelopment opportunity sites that if if redevelopment comes along, it should be, the buildings should. Whatever buildings can be built at that time should be oriented more towards the street with like parking in the back. You know, um, and then not right on the street either, I mean, there should be a pedestrian character as well. Street trees and then, you know, if you potentially, this, you know, then then, um, Nathan Hale Plaza, we, you know, that obviously offers the greatest opportunity. For redevelopment and then to kind of create that, establish that initial character. And then there, you know, there's also a couple of other associated properties and and we feel that those could potentially be added to that to kind of add to it, especially since. I think it's, uh, fifty and fifty-two William, uh, Palmer actually have some sewer cap- capacity that could actually maybe help. Make the redevelopment of this site even greater. Um, obviously, the sites that are also on Ray Palmer. You know, these are the, uh, offer also their own unique character because first of all, as they, well, you know, as they face Falls Road, there's a steep incline. So what's gonna be crucial with any kind of redevelopment of these three properties here is to, or any, you know, even if it's just subtle redevelopment. It's trying to take advantage of, uh, of that sloping area by incorporating, um, terraces, patios, things like that that go down on their property. Would require some retaining walls, but trying to introduce more character of those buildings that are up on top of that hill with the roadway. Um, also then that would also potentially, if there's some selective clearing into the, um, um. The river, uh, trail area in the park, you could potentially, you know, dine up here and then on a terrace and then when the weather is nice and you could potentially see the. The, uh, you know, the the wa- the river or the trails and things like that. That would also encourage as people might be driving by, they would be, oh, there's something actually happening up there. This does offer some also, because these properties have frontage on both stra- sides, I think that Ray Palmer, uh, drives or road shouldn't be forgotten either. Like there could be some character on that and then the site that's on the south side of that, which is undeveloped. Also offers opportunity to kind of, uh, create, start to create that village center, even if it's not right on the the main road, but there could be, that could be offset. Um, so that the, this site and this site being relatively either prime for redevelopment or undeveloped, offer those kind of initial. Sites that could really be, you know, forge that, that that character that the that the town potentially desires. Um, the, um, old lumberyard property is obviously the largest, there's a lot of many different things going on in that site. But even if it doesn't get fully redeveloped, there's still oppor- small opportunities for that property owner to make some subtle changes. Or maybe even some significant changes that might help with that. The market building, you know, which is out near the front, um, uh, just some slight adjustments or maybe maybe a small addition to that building where it kind of maybe extends. The frontage out a little bit, um, into the parking area could actually help form that kind of that, um. You know, street wall type of thing or streetscape type of a thing. Obviously, in the right of way itself, with, you know, better sidewalk and, um, uh, plantings and things like that and also better signage. That could also help tie into it.
If you're going eastbound, you can't tell there's a grocery store there.
Um, right, because of the the signage and the you just don't see anything, so that's why just some subtle changes to that or in addition to that building or trying to reorient at that kind of the front of the the market. Could have big im- impacts on that particular site. We know that the coffee roaster is, you know, currently just a roaster, but that 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 business owner does have interest in maybe creating more of a space. And so that's also a potential catalyst property project, where maybe to try to encourage that, um, that 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 tenant to do that. And maybe having like kind of a a plaza area within the property, like this could almost become an activity site within the overall area. Where people would be drawn to it and then through it and then uh, back out to the river. Um, the trails are on the other side of the river, but over time, there could be a connection to that with a a a bridge or something like that. That could really almost create like a, um, pedestrian promenade along the river and then people would end up in this like kind of activity, um, area where there's. Total restaurants or or coffeehouse, you know, trying to connect the market then with the, um, the liquor store also, um, or package store also presents some challenges. Because it's the existing old, uh, um, uh, auto repair shop. We know that that's a lucrative business and it's doing well, but it's right now, it it's not functioning, the building. The 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 business is functioning well, but the building's not functioning well for the site. So maybe this is an opportunity where the business could stay, but maybe they reorient their building, um, somehow more to kind of fill in that. And then would allow for that maybe better parking or pulling through or around at the back of the property and then maybe going out onto North Mudus. So that people going through with, uh, boat trailers and things like that are are more safely entering back onto Route one forty-nine.
I got a proposal. That trail system that comes down to the park there off the back of, um.
You mean up here?
Yeah.
These up here?
It goes out to Clark Gates, correct? Or it could, it could.
Good.
It couldn't, yeah. And then had it go over to the school property. And then they bought the hayfield there. Across the hayfield to Grandview Campground.
Yeah, no, the 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 goal is on the north side of the Cronberg, which is the hayfield. Is to have a north access to North Mudus Road, which would be just a little bit down north of of Banner Road.
Right, so people come, they tow in their camper for the weekend, a lot of people go there just for the weekend. They're weekend campers and they have golf carts that they keep on site and they can take the golf cart down the path all the way there. And they get their ice cream and they get their groceries.
Right.
And stuff they didn't wanna travel with. They can do it all by golf cart or walking and it gets people out and about and and they can come in the back way there and it's all owned by town land.
Right, I mean, I think when we found out about these trails and how far up it potentially goes and all the way to the school.
You and you could go all the, you could go all the way down to fields down there and watch a game.
Exactly, so we knew that this without a doubt was a very crucial thing. Making sure, I mean, obviously, these trails are already right here, but we don't want it continuing down like say Grissmill, that's why, um. We think it's crucial to then have this mo- what we call the Mudus River Trail. That would, you know, be in this area, that would be the crucial linkage to kind of end that, uh, and bring. People down into then the commercial area as well as getting to the municipal center and all others, so. We were pretty excited when we found out about that and got the fact that it most of it was already constructed, that it seemed like it was logical to make sure that we made a connection to that.
You have another question, the green, um, parcel that is adjacent to the, yes, is the town, that's town-owned?
Yes.
So if if the town determines we don't need any more ball fields, can that possibly be?
Very wet.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Is it very wet?
Well, they never decided they need less football fields.
It's also extremely steep, it's very steep, like it looks like a lot of property, but that's why the ball fields are only over here. Because the rest of it is like very steep overall this side. And I think that might be why it's wet, because I think there's a lot of drainage that's kind of ending up like right there.
Right, there's room for three ball fields.
I think it's potentially impossible in the, you know, in the future.
There's room for three ball fields there? Well, they're smaller, would they, they, we had, actually designed, completely designed, uh, that's when Tiffany was here, she needed larger green spaces. Versus, so on the plan, it shows small, the little guy's soccer fields. But she said her goal is not to have them stationary, because what happens, you wear out the grass right in front of the goal. Or if it's softball, you wear out the path, so she said she wanted a very flexible setup that she could keep rotating around.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause see, you have these Saturday morning and all of a sudden you have two hundred kids on a field at once, all between the ages of, you know, four and twelve.
Or like flat open space that.
Correct, correct, but it came with, you know, the the stormwater drainage, the fencing, the whole nine yards.
Have a question.
By the way, Jim, if I called them athletic fields in their current recommendations, if that name needs to get adjusted to like.
No, that's.
Something else, just let me know.
It's a good generic term.
Yeah.
Um, I was wondering if you had considered a seasonal holiday, um, events in in East Hattam overall. Right now, we are trying to have Christmas events centered in town, we're kind of borrowing the private airport. And you know, they're they're very nice about it, but I was wondering if the municipal parking and some of that space where the fields are might lend itself to. Uh, a secondary or maybe even a primary Christmas event, like a Christmas market area, cause we 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 have the parking baked in. Available in the evening and, you know, e- the economic development hit would, you know, from the booths and and local goods.
Right.
Might create a nice little Christmas center there.
In the, um, economic development recommend overarching or obili- or center-wide recommendations, one of those recommendations is to have. Events and activities, a couple of them are mentioned that we found out from talking with town staff, you know, like, um. Um, but then we also listed some other possible things like farmers markets or whatever, but that would be really, we actually have a question at that point for. But then we also listed some other possible things like farmers markets or whatever, but that would be really, we actually have a question at that point for. I g- I think I originally tar- targeted it towards the um EDC, but it could come from the planning, anybody really. But we're looking for other suggestions, we don't necessarily, because they were. Center wide recommendations, we didn't necessarily target it to a specific site because um we felt that that could be determined later. But if you, in seeing the recommendations, in that that particular area, you could per certainly like in your comments that you would get back to us, you could actually maybe list something even more. Specific if you want uh everybody to consider it and then if you would say. If you wanted to target that for a specific area, you could then say that, you could s- you know, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, the parking is key to having a community event um.
I think something like that would just develop over time, it's not like you can really.
Yeah.
At this point, you know, we're just trying to get it all together. I think something.
Yeah.
It will it would develop on its own.
Ideas I think should be there and have plenty of them, but then where the location is could be decided later, but you would wanna make sure there's parking and things like that. The hope would be that with improved pedestrian connections that um that might also make it, you know, more, you know, even if parking was over here. But the event was over here, I mean, you probably wouldn't wanna walk there today with the way the situation is, but with. Completed sidewalks or crosswalks and so things like that, it would make it safer to recommend to encourage that. Future when you lay out the groundwork for that event where you could park.
I know right now they do the. They still do it, right, the tree line then down on the center and they start and Plains Road is pretty much closed down. You know, Plains Road is right out here.
Follow me would be another time of the year to have a safe, you know, pedestrian safe and parking issue so that it just lends itself to. Bringing the town together and giving opportunities for the local businesses to.
Definitely.
Have a presence.
I think that's a crucial future component for the economic development vitality.
Yeah, that was kind of my question, uh how. Would, how did you prioritize the elimination of Plains Road, is that high on your list or?
Well, um it's it's in there, but we were cautious. Before, so what we talked about was the elimination of the leg of it with in front of the Masa Day House. But that. You know, we didn't really, it would have to be studied further, but for the apartment buildings that from like nineteen to twenty-five Plains Road. We rec- I mean, right now, we're suggesting that probably be continued, um but probably improved to be a little bit more structured. And maybe that structuring would also maybe eliminate some of the spaces that would then. Maybe have to encourage the property owners to start looking more on their properties if it doesn't conflict with their sewage uh. Systems, but that is a sensitive site and, you know, there is. With it being potentially restructured or just um improved as far as the physical appearance, it might kind of add to the character of the area.
You have to block off just the first couple hundred feet come up, Plains Road there.
Yeah, like in front of the Amasa Day House, yeah.
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 Because you get a delivery truck that's not familiar with the area and they turn up there and I think it was last fall, it's what they hit the curb and pushed it all out and.
Right, I yeah, I think without a doubt that part, especially because the town green is right or the village green is right there and then just making that. A pedestrian way and then adding to the green spaces and then allowing for that greater cost watch to get over to the uh. The Mudus River, I think it's just because.
Just went to sleep like this.
But then is that, if you're watching online, are you seeing that?
You seen that.
Not seeing blacks, we we probably should wake up.
Now, on the river park. Just a sidewalk towards the uh. On the roadside or are you talking about a walkway, like what I envision is like a a raised walkway going along. The apex of the hill so you could walk along there and look down on the uh on the river. That could connect onto trails going out towards North Mudus Road in that way.
Sorry, say it again?
But I'm I'm looking at the river park there, right across from, right. Now, are you just talking about having a uh a walkway along the road or you're also talking about trails and walkways on the. Inside so you could walk along?
So like, as I said, there would have to be uh um to connect this area so that anybody that's. A pedestrian like walking that would, you know, to make sure that it's ADA compatible. Uh there is, you know, sidewalk on the south side, but because the park is gonna be on the north side. That there would, there would need to be a hard, you know, a concrete sidewalk that's added along the roadway along the north side.
What about, what about further in?
But further in.
Impacts of the hill is there.
But further in in the backside of the um the Mudus River Park, be then the nature trail that would then trans- you know, go down the sloping property. Um down to the river and then meet up probably about the river, probably about where the um stone bridge is.
Right.
And then, you know, the stone bridge would probably be used to to cross over and then continue up on that side and then eventually you would cross back over. Um and then to get up to the um. The other trail that's up here in Hidden Valley.
So will.
So there would be two, there would be the, just along the road, there would be the hard sidewalk and then in the down by the river, there would be the nature trail.
Now, now might be a good time to stand on top of that embankment and study. The view there because they just put a big white patch in that roof, the Brownell Company. See s- seeing what your view is actually gonna be. You know. Where you're gonna do the break for the.
Yeah, I mean, if you look to the northwest, you probably would see that building primarily, but.
You're talking about sitting there on a tier and look at the Mudus River, you don't, you might see the Mudus River from one angle, you might see a big.
Right.
Seventy-five thousand square foot roof.
Focus would be on this way.
Right.
That's when we get dark project building.
I'm watching with Jimson's yard.
There could potentially be a possibility for new landscaping on this side too.
Jim, you've got some cute goats there, right?
That's it.
How how much focus did you have on uh traffic calming uh devices for?
Well, um because we're talking about primarily the state road. You know, we only are proposing things that we feel or we believe that Connecticut DOT would be. You know, okay with and that would be like changes in materials or crosswalks. Things like that, I don't think, you know, we're not proposing any, I mean, there is some, you know, from the safety audit, there was some kind of. Narrowing of the roads, but still having the required width, so we're 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 tagging in with that. But we didn't take it any any farther, other than making recommendations for additional pedestrian uh scale improvements.
Is the narrowing of the road plan, is that written in stone?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm not certain right or you know, where the state audit study that was done by FHI, where does that stand?
Well, that's a record, those were their recommendations, so. It's not, it's a, it's not totally written in stone, no. No, first.
If you're gonna.
They said, they said for true engineering.
If we are going to try to get a village, we need to slow the speed down there. And one ways, the primary way of slowing the speed down is cutting down the pavement and conduct does allow for.
Yeah.
Done a call.
Can we call it road diet or?
Road diet. We have minimum lane that that's required for, that's a major or turn or a minor? It's a major.
I'd say it's worth a major.
So there's minimum risk we have to meet.
Right.
For that, but we're beyond that, there's a fifteen seven foot cross section or something there, yeah.
And if you pull out of North Mudus Road with anything longer than a SUV.
Yeah, you're done.
But no matter how good and fast your turn head is. Somebody, you got trailer on a school bus, yeah, you can't, you can't clear until you get the other lane, they're coming.
Well, you got, you gotta slow, you gotta do a road diet and slow the speed down, either that or chicanes or something in the road.
Not gonna slow them down.
Ignore, but you can do curb bump outs, you can.
Curb bump out would be, which can be helpful.
So would it be the same, less or more dangerous than crossing from the um.
That's an extra.
Good speed offer house to the parking across the street?
That's an extra too.
There is the possibility.
On a higher rate, speed through one point nine.
Going through Mudus on a higher speed.
Yeah.
While we all hate it, that turn off the bridge is actually good.
Is a calmer.
Yeah.
And it's not a wi- as wider road there, it's it's just people are, it's part of the problem, it's like, oh, look at the pretty uprise.
Yeah.
You're going two twenty miles an hour versus people are coming through there at fifty-five.
True, true.
I mean, there is the possibility because I thought Ed mentioned this last time we discussed it, the traffic circle and that intersection, cuz the intersection's huge.
Right.
And the traffic circles as we see from the building, they're not that big.
No.
So I mean, they could run it uh without a stoplight, run a traffic circle, that would be slowing them down. That is a pretty bad intersection and pretty much everybody agrees, that is one bad spot if you're pulling out.
Yes, it is.
Like on the road, that's.
You're talking about one forty-nine?
Yeah.
One fifty-one?
And.
Yeah, the topo there is.
A lot of North Mudus Road trying to take a left.
Oh, in Mudus, okay, yeah.
You take it right, then you take a left, then you come down and you take a right.
I know.
I mean, that's one way, that's one way to slow the speed down in the middle of village.
Would that be a.
Oh, I mean, that's what it's, it does work and you don't have to have a stop.
Jim, would that be on some kind of priority list for the state in terms of uh?
Only if that's a bad intersection.
Even when we did a traffic study for the middle school. A kind of poo poo to traffic light or any ca- calming at all, they said it's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Did a circle come up though?
Nobody's died there yet, is that the idea?
Yeah, yeah. Did a, did a traffic circle come up? I mean, it's a lot more.
You you turn three times, the back, the back's, I mean, enter the intersection.
We'd have to get on the capital improvement list and that's a five year program. Well, they they might slip it in, but they're they they're usually pro- they're usually projecting five years out.
Oh, five years, we've been working on this thing for four months.
No, but like, okay, hey, hey, we wanna, you know, here here, we wanna do a traffic slip here and and we get DOT to agree to it, they've gotta put it into their five year projection. And where it falls in that, it could be a couple of years out, it could be five years out.
I think Madison's got the only decent sized rotary where you can get into it, you can actually get your head straight before the next.
Yeah, you have enough gap.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we have here, Robert?
Okay, so what I, what I hinted out is just a little bit more detail about what we just talked about and just to. Um if you look at the document that has multiple pages, it says vision statement, I again would, uh just to go through what's in this document, just to clarify is the very first page, again, is that vision statement. Uh we, you know, and overarching themes that, you know, uh we talked about and that we shared with you in the early winter. And then the second page is that summary, um it's kind of like the outline for all of the more specific recommendations. Um you know, identifying the uh center wide recommendations as well as the target areas. So that's the summary and then when you get to the third page, this is where we then get into the more detail about each one of those recommendations. And so in the center wide recommendations, oh. Also, just to kind of explain the color coding a little bit, you know, again, back in the very beginning with the um. You know, in the villa, the vision statement, the overarching themes were one, the village character and economic development, which is orange. And then there's the streetscape, which is, which is blue and then the park recreation and natural environment, how they, those are the three overarching themes from the. Um over vision statement, we just kind of color coded them. Um when we get back to the more specific recommendations, so you would know how that recommendation fits into the vision statement. So the overarching. Village wide um ones have specific recommendations, but then the target area recommendations, which um. Start on page. Eight. Those don't necessarily have a specific recommendation, instead they're they're assigned by like the sites, the target area. So the target area is actually the recommendation within the things that are below it, so. What I, what my plan was tonight was to, you know, give you the overview. To all of your questions, but then obviously, we wanna give you a chance to kind of digest this and read it a little bit more detail. So that's why I'm, you know, I'm adding this out, um what we need to decide is um how how much time you all might want to review it. And then full get comments back uh to Jim so that we can maybe consolidate any comments that you have. Um or other additional recommendations, so we could then uh get to a situation where we can finalize the recommendations. And then we need to determine what the next steps after that would be, um whether we want to promote this um through the town's website and share it to the community. Have another um like a community open house or have like um some kind of like planning and zoning or Economic Development Commission meeting. Review of uh of that so that we can then move to the final report.
Let's review it and uh what what do we have going on for our next meeting? Not much right now.
Not much right now.
Yeah, we can review it in two weeks.
Is that when your next meeting is?
Yeah, the second.
So if everybody reads it in between now and then and then you could um consolidate your comments. Um.
There's a subject for everyone?
Yeah, plenty to.
Then you could share back with.
What's that done?
Plenty done.
Yes. Send enough time. Figure out whether, how we wanna proceed from that.
Is that enough time for you, Robert or?
Um well, I I mean, I'm gonna be uh idling while you guys are reviewing it. So and not, you know, because obviously I'll just be waiting to get your feedback. I mean, we would be, you know, on our end, what we're doing is we are, we are in some cases further refining some of the specifics. I know that for like in some of the redevelopment areas, there's a lot of like bullet points for different things. I think in the final plan, we probably would collapse them into more like. So set like, you know, some of those things could be collapsed to several, like one project for that thing and I think we'll we'll fine tune them. But we wanted to kind of put them as individual bullet points so that you all could kind of see them a little bit more clearly. But the final plan, we'll probably collapse them a little bit, um and be a little bit more clear, so that in the implementation table, that would be at the back. You know, that you could use for then to get funding or to, you know, to determine uh your first priorities or it's more um condensed.
In these recommendations, do you have, you mentioned priorities or?
Not yet, yeah, we're just wanting to get like, see if we have all the subjects and then we'll, that's something else we'll have to talk with you. Once we have that and we move to the final plan and the implementation table, we would wanna, I mean, we will have some ju- suggestions, but ultimately. That'll be up to the town to make the determination of whether something is a short term. Again, we tried to tap into some existing studies, so we knew that some of those might be the short term, but then medium term and then longer term goals.
Have you walked um the proposed trail area or? Heaped on the ground with your team or?
So I mean, anything that's like along the main road we have, but I know that for the actual trail, we actually did talk about that just a couple of weeks ago and I know that our landscape architecture. Team is well, is interested in that and I think we will do the the trail walk.
All right, just give me, give me a guide.
And I think most everything else has been, you know, we saw when we did our.
Are you guys able to make it in two weeks for our next meeting?
Okay. I'm not sure I'll be able to do that meeting, but um we knew, but I mean, need to see.
No, take a vote out and.
What what is the date of that meeting?
No, we'll save your time.
The uh, it needs tonight. Second Tuesday is the night.
What's that?
Second Tuesday is the night.
Yeah.
Or is it?
The eighth.
The eighth, excuse me, the eighth.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, cuz I, that's what I, yeah, I, I love, I've been needing that.
It's right.
Yes.
Would it be helpful if we um in our comments prioritize some of the things that we thought were important?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think that's what you could talk about, I think um and after you come back together and and make your comments and adjustments, what we could have after that is maybe. Maybe I, we could have a um virtual meeting or something, maybe with the the two chairs and you, Jim, or something like that, maybe we could go through the your recommendations or the candidates.
Actually, we just okay.
Okay, and then we could maybe talk about the next steps.
Right, I'm trying to save your time.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, but be thinking about like next steps as far as like what you, what type of sharing of this information with the community that you are, would be thinking about.
Correct.
So theoretically, how far away are we from the the sketching uh phase that you described? Recommendations for exterior modifications, architectural modifications?
Um I mean, I think. Probably not pretty quickly after we get your comments back. I would say, because we just didn't wanna necessarily mark them up or anything in case something got. You know, add extra something like that, but I think at this point, once we get your feedback, we would be talking about a short turnaround to get those. Recommendations, it wouldn't be the final document, but the next step would be to kind of put them more into the illustrative format. Of those pages that would be in the final report, just connected with the map. And the re- connecting the recommendations with the map. Um I do have um a rough example, although it doesn't have. It's just the map part, it doesn't have the um. Like text part or the illustrative, but this is an example, this is just would be like the park and trails map. So it it's it's similar to the overall map, but it just shows the more more detail about that. The streetscape one would be similar because in in each one of the intersections, it would show like the crosswalks and things like that. Um, but more from an illustrative scale and then I think what we envision is that, you know, in the document of the report, like this would be a page. And then there would be another page over here and this page over here would actually have the recommendations for trails. You know, just the primary recommendation, but then down here, there would be example pictures as you were men at. Asking that could maybe be some of the materials like in the, in the, uh, uh, the, um, redevelopment areas, there could be like pictures of some of like. Example architecture, um, there could also be for streetscape, there could be examples of like stone columns, um, you know, brick pavers, things like that, batters. Um, and then for the ones for the redevelopment areas, they would be that, but then on the next page, it would be that like a full page character sketch of that site. Um, of of what it could look like.
Okay, any more questions?
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to run through that all with you and, um, I'm looking forward to getting us here all, I think we'll look forward to getting your feedback and then we'll be looking forward to getting everything out.
Do you possibly email that to me so I can send it off to the other?
Sure, um.
Division members that weren't here.
These two things, yeah, 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 I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great.
Jim, can you send that to me as well?
That's what I was gonna, yep, that's, that was the thought, but keep everybody on the same page, you know.
Um, I know that in the recommendations, one other quick thing I just wanted to mention is that, uh, obviously everything is, you know, we want you to review it. You know, uh, clarify or if we've gotten something wrong to make the correction, but there are at least three very specific. Like questions and they're noted with like highlighting it in asterisks and one of them has to do with those events. Um, in the economic development section, the other one is for the economic development commission as well. Because we we need to get clarity on who would kind of be the the leader or the responsible entity for some of the economic development stuff. You know, whether it may be like a mainstream program or business association or the economic development commission itself. So you'll see that that's like an asterisk, very specific question, um. And I know that the other ones I think are more for you, Jim, so I wanted to get some clarity on two of the sites related to the septic, uh, report from two thousand fifteen.
Do.
And we don't wanna assume anything that poor tavern guy tried to create a tavern and then he found out he didn't have enough water.
Okay. Yeah, or sewage, that's what you mean, or actual.
For some water. No, he actually didn't have water.
The water.
Drinkable water.
He hadn't existing, yeah.
Existing water went dry or something?
Went dry with just his residential component. And yet it's tic tac toe because just down the road, there's levels that all of them are over twenty five gallons a minute and one of them's ninety and it's a gels analysis, even more than that.
Right.
Really couldn't pop it up to him, but.
We, um, we didn't talk about pot, I mean, you know, like drinkable water, but there is a rec- there are the recommendations in the utilities that divide, it is separate between the sewage and water. And the water recommendation is, you know, uh, you know, to to consider a public utility for, um. Uh, for, you know, potable water, which might be more realistic, um, and helpful than like the sewage system.
Golf course had a problem with water too, no water for the golf course, so we, some water issues.
So I'll have to talk with Arizona to find out how they do golf courses out there with no water. So, okay, well, thanks again and we'll look forward to your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
We have a, the rest of our meeting presented, but you gentlemen are more than satisfied.
Yeah.
Stay or leave.
I understand if you want.
So they generally.
Not a fear, you'd you'd have to move into the audience.
Sorry if you have more, too much time.
You can leave, we won't be offended.
Okay.
Yeah, trust me.
Okay, discussion, BB Road.
Oh, that's right.
Under my attention, when we were at BB Road, we asked for an Asbilt, we haven't gotten one yet, uh, so are we working on that?
So I talked to Gary at Public Works and he's got created Asbilt using the telephone pole. Spot is a benchmark because there's nothing in there that's permanent, trees fall down. Stone walls move, so he says that's good until somebody comes around the corner and. It's double bowl, they have to put a new one in, but he is gonna provide elevations for it, so he is working on that.
I just remind everyone that, uh, BB Road falls under our purview because it's a scenic road, all scenic roads in town fall in, fall under planning and zoning. We pretty much, there are more, more, you know, our purview, everything belongs to us.
Leading up with the guardrail.
That's one that that is up to this, you know, commission recommendation, I mean, I. Fact of the matter is they they said, well, if you put a guardrail in, it'll pinch the road, but if you pinch the road, then it becomes one.
We don't put a guardrail, we're gonna be fishing on a teenager.
Then we, then then you have one lane road in, which slows down traffic.
Which is. That it it'll it'll, you know, have a dual purposes, I had, if you go down to the Patacon Yacht Club in Chester, there's a bridge, it's a narrow bridge. There's a sign, so you have to stop, one way bridge, well, the guardrail comes out, you're gonna have three pinch points where they're redoing all the culverts on BB Road. Now all of a sudden, he comes in, you have a sign that says stop, so you're gonna have to stop, one way road. And it's your health and safety, am I correct?
Yeah.
And you're not expanding the road because there is a a a width that we have to stay with, am I correct, what is it, fifteen or twelve?
No, we de- declared that a scenic road, I took measurements back in ninety seven, that actually what the existing was, that was the goal, was to try to keep the existing.
Right, but if we put it out, then it would almost be too wide.
It's way past that, what's that, width?
Yeah.
In parts, right? Yeah, it's, but not, it's not a ton, everybody thinks it is, but it's not.
It's what?
It's not a ton.
We can make a recommendation that there's a guide rail there, but honestly, the engineer who did that covert design and didn't include the guide rail, I question.
We talked about.
It is not, I mean, you you don't have a clear zone, you don't have anything other than the drink. And to do that is, and quite honestly, it's not up to this board or anybody on it to design it. Cause we have to be able to straddle the culverts properly with the guide rail. And the spacing is probably not there without driving into one of the culverts, that should have been included in the design.
Well, they do just put a twenty in and that's it.
I forget, no, there's three.
Four, four.
Four?
Cullards, but they're all just twenty foot lengths, that's it, and that's the.
Yeah, but they're grouped together too.
There's no, uh, concrete in walls or nothing?
No, and getting a, getting a.
And it's definitely squeezed down to at least fifteen or less, right?
But then it comes down to a a health and safety, I mean, and it's been sitting there for a year now. Down there.
Has anyone gone in the water?
Not yet.
Not yet.
But. Do we roll one on the other and I'll roll the dice and.
I've used that argument before about a lot of stuff, but they never listen, so, you know, it's like. Nobody ever got killed ever before.
What's the spacing normally, do you know?
It's like fiber, you have to check.
So, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna hit all of them.
Yeah, you got, you gotta work around them.
So.
You're gonna get a map that's coming next, is that?
Yeah, it's coming, yeah. So we'll get the Asbilt and go from there.
And then, uh, the Mudus Reservoir Preservation Group, uh, is having me fill out an application for a drawdown for next winter. Um, for weed control and some property maintenance, so if the DEP grants that, then that site will actually, you knock the Beaver Dam down, you gain a foot. And then you'll have the two other feet from the natural loop, so they may be able to get that gravel and all that stuff without hiring a vacuum truck to do it. Cause right now it's, it filled up too quickly on them, they never got.
All the stuff that wasn't removed after it got washed out, that's still sitting there?
So, that was another one on the wetlands list. And the last thing is that they, uh, talked about putting a, you know, basin, there's no room for a basin unless you. Use a wet basin, so I took the stormwater manual and said, maybe we should consider this, because when it, you know. It just, there just isn't room, it slides right up quickly, basin for, for the sediment that's coming from the. On up there, the, no, the, uh, the roadway itself, that steep section erodes and it ends up in the lake and so if you put a. Form a pool and in front of it, you know, it'll trap it there and then we can get it out on a annual basis versus trying to create a basin in the dry. Getting an easement, you know, you're making a big hole for nothing. Yeah.
What, what area are you talking about?
So when you leave the paved part, you're heading down the hill, that sharp hill, you know, that that part, because it's gravel, it erodes away. I mean, just, you know, it's gonna erode away, it's gravel, so it's. So they wanna try to do is catch sediment before it instantly proper, you know, you put a little basin in the place, but it has to be at the toe of the slope. Partially wetlands, partially open water.
Never considered paving, maybe have they? I mean, seriously, you get the exact width that you want, it doesn't vary constantly with work and you're not, I mean, these potholes that you fight, the erosion, I mean. Seems like there's a lot of traffic on that road too for that, I mean, you keep it narrow, but you stop going out there. What, three, four times a year redoing the damn road? It's just, it is a practical way to do it, it still remains scenic. And you can get rid of all that erosion into the reservoir, which I know has been ongoing for ever.
Decades.
Is that a nonstarter with a scenic group? Baby?
Has that been discussed, that option?
You can, well, there's tons of scenic roads that are paved, I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
But you get fixed width is one of the things that is constantly, we've got other dirt roads that are expanding, you know, Salem is like thirty feet or more wide in places for some reason. They just keep making them wider as they keep grading them off, putting more process down, I mean, once you pave them, you're not making it any wider, you're not driving off the edge either. I'm just saying, it's it's solve some of the, I I maybe some popular, but.
Yeah, and you wanna go talk to the neighbors down there?
Hey, it's like, you know, you you're pouring money into it one way or the other.
No, I.
I I mean, I wouldn't think about paving until they repair the other pipes, that has to be engineered and designed, those things are.
How far off are those to be worked on?
Well, they're working on the design now, so.
They're working on.
The design.
Designing.
But then you, you know, you, if you go and get state aid.
Hmm, did they hire a firm?
Yeah, Jacobson still, Jacobson. Cause they're, they're, there's a role to.
Who's the engineer who did the one that we had to have done, um, that we all went and looked at, that wasn't Jacobson, was it?
Yeah.
Was it, it was? How come, okay, I don't know why they didn't do the Asbilt, I don't understand, whatever. Okay. Anything else on BB Road?
No.
Sorry.
I think that covered a key point, home occupation.
Yes. Uh, PZC number twenty five dash zero three, twenty nine Wickham Road, property location, Daniel Flack, applicant and property owner. And that's a zero five one lot, double eight, home office.
So these get easier and easier. This is telehealth, remote only, office use. No customers to the property.
Psychologists are on it?
Yeah.
For your show, yeah. Questions, comments? Just harmless the thing when we've forgotten, yeah. Give the guy permission to use it.
Yeah, right.
Anyone care to make a motion, make a move, motion where you approve the applications is?
Twenty five oh three.
Twenty five, like, application twenty five oh three. Twenty nine Wickham Road for Daniel Flack, for home use of a, um, private practice psychology.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any other business trouble?
So zoning enforcement, I had to go out and issue five cease and desist for seasonal because it snowed, it's really easy that way. Uh, sad part about on a couple of them, they were actually reissues of previous cease and desist. Few buyers that paid cash didn't get a title search. Wow, is right.
That's a surprise.
Yeah, I mean, real surprise to one, Kai called me up and said, uh, 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 cease and desist.
These are actual cease and desist orders, they're not the preliminary letters.
Yeah. No, especially when you've got, you know, they, you already have one on file on land records, in fact, in that case, those weren't actually cease and desist, there was just a copy of the old ones. Saying, congratulations, you you made a mistake, please contact my office. Well, that, and on the other hand, though, I was looking into the old files and properties and all that, and I sent out seven letters with how our zoning regulations changed. Copy of what the criteria is and that, some of these properties, when I look at it and I do the tic tac toe, they actually make it, so I said, you know. They'd asked me about it in the past and, you know, at that point, they were pretty far away from ZBA approval, you know, and so. The technology change over the years and everything else and the fact that we don't have the half acre minimum, I sent them letters to us. Packages to see if they were.
Well, now if it's an existing house, they don't have to have the one system, right, they don't have to show the second.
Correct, they just have to show a single code complying septic system.
But if it was a new building, then they have to have both.
You have to, you have to show the reserve for subdivision.
For subdivision.
Yes.
But if it was just a single house on a single lot somewhere, then no.
Uh, no, they can still make you do the extra test bits.
So, I knew you gotta show the reserve.
But, yeah, you.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that, okay, that's what I thought, cause that came up in a conversation.
Even though the reserve never gets used, but.
Yeah.
So someone bought a new place, they automatically think it's a septic, uh, yeah.
Well, typically, if you buy a new place, the bank requires a septic inspection, a water inspection, radar inspection, all that. But when you pay cash on a handshake deal and have just an attorney write it, but Dean, you might not cover all the bases necessary.
Yeah, maybe they'll do the title search and find the stuff on the land records that say.
Did not do it.
Well, well, I was asking for like year round conversions and stuff, that all falls, falls under that, yeah.
But I mean, this is li- listed on the tax card as a seasonal and these people bought it for year round use.
And 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 also the, if you, you know, it's it's on for the address, the cease and desist is on the land record, so it's automatic.
Oh, besides, and besides, it's already been.
It's it's on the land record.
They never went in the chest.
Where were these properties, like Hayward or? Uh, no, Lake, well, no, I got one in Lake Hayward, I gotta double it back, check on it, but there's their reservoir innovation. I mean, one person actually tried to register to vote here and they were told they couldn't register to vote here because it was a seasonal cottage.
No, interesting.
And that would, you know, I'm like, he, you know, you already were told no, what part of it, you know, and and the problem is, again, I keep on saying it. You, these three properties that, that one's on piers, I don't know what they did for heat, but it's a good way to cause a fire. You know, piers in the winter, on a lake, wind blowing, freezing down.
Oh, it gets cold, yeah, across the lake. Any other business?
Jim, on your, on your, uh, list of properties to clean up, was, uh, South Silas Homes one of them? It was, but they're on it. What a success story that was.
Yeah, they're gonna build there or what are they doing?
He's gonna, he first had to clear everything out and now he's going to retest the property and. Figure out the maximum that he can do, cause he's worried about, you know, he says, you know, might not be able to get anything more than a two bedroom place on it. So, they're gonna do that, do do their due diligence.
Yeah, he's taking his time, is he doing it himself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you you're talking north Silas Homes, where the old Petticoat Lane and.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm talking about the property on the south end.
That one's on my list.
They they cleaned up a lot there.
What, behind the, uh, um, Frank's House?
Right off of, um.
Gold Springs.
Gold Springs.
Yeah, the red house. Yeah, the red house, the the old farmhouse behind that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, it took like three phone calls.
It's it's, no one's living in that house.
Oh, no, he was renting it.
Okay.
He was renting it, so.
Go to that part, but the owner's not there right now.
Oh, he rented the house out to that person.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. And someone from the Berlin Sporting Club shot my map holder. No. You sure? Do you have that on camera?
Was it to adjourn?
Comments from anywhere? We good?
Do our homework.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Any opposed?